Good afternoon. So glad to be on this. So we're going to talk in that the back session. And we are going to start to listen. And call it early. Do you think I'm actually the doc to send us? I think I know my thing is saying. All right, so you like that?
Card number up. Card number ninety. Card number five. Card number five. Card number five.
Hi. Much better.
There's nothing different.
Thank you so much. In order to make the announcement that according to our new guidelines.
Any adult who is fully vaccinated. Is that better? Any adult that is fully vaccinated has the choice to not wear their mask. However, if you and me in this room who is under the age of eighteen, we all put our masks back on.
With that, we will turn over to. Managing this part of the meeting, which is Mr. Frederickson. Thank you.
Well, good evening. And first of all, we can take a look at our new devices that we have here. I want to thank Mr. Favela for the work he has been doing to try to make this type of broadcast. Run a little smoother. And so hopefully tonight's we will have where everybody will be able to hear. We also have some quotes coming in on the overall system. At this time, we're going to try using these new microphones and hope that they will help. Just a reminder to the board. Anytime you're speaking, make sure you push the mic sound because our people that are watching online. We might be able to hear you in the bit in the room, but they can't pick up unless your mic is on. Because the sound goes directly to from that speaker into Mr. Favela's computer. So anyway, well, welcome to our budget study. It's our time to start the initial phase of looking at our assumptions for developing the budget for next year. And I appreciate the work that Liz has been doing. We're starting to get an idea of our staffing at this point, looking at that. We all. We also have numerous plans that what makes this so different than what the board has dealt with in the past, and me as well. Is that we have so many plans out there because of the pandemic and they keep coming. With all different types of funding formulas and impacts. So what we're doing at this point is starting to look at all those plans. Look at what our balances are. Look at what our requirements are. On many of those plans, we made recommendations and actions. That were really personnel intensive. And what we have found over the last year is all with good intention, not be able to hire all of this personnel. So that's going to be the interesting part as we start to look at our budget for next year and looking at those different plans and. Budgets is how much did we not extend? And do we use those those resources to do something different? Or do we use them to extend the services that we had originally planned? We thought they were a good option. So that's kind of what's going to make this a little bit more challenging. We're going to try to give you some updates on those as well. But this is the shorter session. It's just to get us kicked started into that, the assumptions for developing our budget. I'll turn it over to Liz.
Good evening. This is very nice. All right. As Mr. Frederickson said, we're going to begin looking at the assumptions and the guidelines. If you recall at the last budget study session, we reviewed some of the. We reviewed some of the factors and information from the January governor's budget that was released. Some of those I'll also touch upon as we go through this because there will be a key part of of our assumptions that we use. And so I'll go through this document and just review some of the highlights. And especially some of the ones that we discussed at the last budget study session and that the board requested. So if you look at the first page of the agenda. And just give you an overview of what we're going to look at. It has a welcome and our purpose, our assumptions and the guidelines are really the the two big pieces of this whole document. And this is our first draft of the board reviewing this. This will be a process that we go through. Continuing to update this document for the next several budget study sessions. That would be the process as the board provides input and feedback and we make any changes that we will be using. As then this becomes a guiding document for us to build our budget on. And we also will talk about enrollment and staffing, as Mr. Frederickson discussed. A few fiscal impacts that we list, facilities and capital projects. And then just information, next steps and looking at overall budget calendar. So I'll go ahead and go and over to page. Three, you'll pull up to page three with me. Like I said, I'm just going to go through some of the highlights. And one of the biggest ones always being our enrollment. Which translates into our eighty year average daily attendance, which is how we're funded. If you recall, at the last budget study session, when we discussed some of the January governor's proposals. One of the new proposals. And that is in response to the pandemic and the significant declines that have been seen statewide. For enrollment is funding or for for districts to have a third option to be funded on. Either right now, it's either you're funded on prior year, current year, the greater of. And now a third option would be a three year average of the the previous three years. And again, this is to help districts kind of navigate that sharp decline that we've seen over these past couple of years. So that is the assumption that we're working with currently. And what you're seeing with the numbers that you see here with our current assumptions. And then the other thing I want to point out with our enrollment, we discussed this briefly as well, but. For the twenty two twenty three year, you see there compared to the twenty one twenty two year. You see the the decrease of sixty nine. That's I would say that's definitely a conservative assumption because we're not factoring in. Any additional students right now at this time for TK and expanded TK, which we've discussed. As well as full day kinder, which we're definitely expecting to have additional students for both of those. But that's not factored in at this point in time. So again, that would be then a conservative assumption. If we see more of those, that will help offset that. And then underneath there, you just see the chart that just illustrates the the effect of the declining enrollment that we've seen. Going all the way back to twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. Any questions on that? Yes, this is ladies.
I have heard any movements from the legislature on that on that third proposal or those proposals. We don't know at all. What we've heard is that there's a lot of discussion about. Maybe even improving that there there are about three or four different proposals. Of how to go about doing that. Some of some are, for example, just doing this as a one time proposal for next year. And ranging from that to having this be a permanent change that that gets enacted. So there's there's several proposals, all in favor of some kind of. I guess just some kind of adjustment or kind of different way of of funding, recognizing that this is a statewide problem. So there's just a lot of discussions still, but I think it's definitely good news that. Everybody acknowledges that there is a problem. It's just how what exactly is the decision point look like? And we'll see when it actually gets passed, obviously, June fifteen, which is when they're required to to pass the budget.
Are you looking at the other two options though? At preparing the budget or you're just looking at the third option, which is the combining of the. The three, are you looking at the other two options that are obligated right now?
Currently, we're just looking at that third option. The the rest of the options, we could. Could look at each one. I don't remember all of the details off the top of my head, to be honest, because there's some of those other proposals other than what I mentioned. Those were just the other scenarios. I don't think. They vary that greatly from what I've seen to make a significant difference. And be able to really kind of look at different scenarios like we've done in the past, sometimes with some of the different COAs. But based on what I've seen at this point, I don't think it's significant enough to warrant different projections. The only thing that would be significant enough would be if we didn't even use that third assumption at all. Then we would paint a more much more drastic picture of revenue reductions if we didn't use. I wouldn't say much more, but definitely a more. Reduction to revenue in the next few years if we didn't use that third assumption, which is why it's on the table. For districts across the whole state.
Okay, I I appreciate that a lot, but as fiduciaries of the district, we really do need to know the worst case scenarios. For me, the other worst case scenario is that it's one time funded. So that's something that we certainly need to look in our budget that it's only one time. And then we have to pick up again the year after it's back where we are now doing the way we are. We're going to be, we are going to be investing, so it's going to be more so. So I would just recommend that at least take a look at it. Because it's to me, it's something that we need to know.
Yeah, I think that's a part of the discussions that we can have. I could bring you back at the next study session, I could add to this and just kind of show you what that difference would be in terms of. ADA number, not necessarily the dollars maybe at that point, but just kind of show you the difference. And then if you want to make that the assumption that we're going that the board would adopt. Then that we would make a second scenario of of a NYPD or a second scenario of a budget. Based on those numbers.
Okay, that's fantastic. I'm so sorry. We are, I'm going to ask everyone a couple of questions until the end because we only have fifteen more minutes. So.
Wow, okay, okay. Now, thank you so much. So just if you have any questions, just write them down. Remember the page numbers and then do them. Thank you. And card number four. And we discussed this as well, but this is the COA for the twenty two twenty three year and the two subsequent years after that that were proposed by the governor. Did you know it's called with a five point three three proposed for next year? Three point six one and then three point six four. So those are the numbers that we are looking through there at this point in time. On page five, I want to just point out, we looked at this chart before where we had. What we have the. Is that better? Okay. Still, we're working on improving, but it's it's a three year average as well, and so it's a work in progress. So. So just want to point that out. On page six, I want to point out the benefits of knowing that. And for several years discussing the increased cost of stirs and first of the retirement cost. For certificated and our classified staff. And you see there in the twenty two point three, the two years after that, you see it continues to increase, looking at the stirs rate. Currently at sixteen nine two, projected to go to nineteen point one percent. And then stay there for the next two years. And then first gone from twenty two point nine percent to twenty five point four, twenty five point two, and then twenty four point six.
So when you look at the bottom, what's great shaded in gray there for certificate, certificated and classified. For example, in the twenty two twenty three year for certificated. Overall, it's twenty two point seven four percent when you take the stirs because most certificate are stirs. And the additional costs are security, Medicare, et cetera. When you take all those together, that's the twenty two point seven four. And for classified thirty five point two twenty four. So for every dollar of salaries that we budget, we have to budget additional twenty two cents. On the dollar and thirty five cents on the dollar for certificate and classified staff. Looking at page seven. I just want to point out, we have the special ed preliminary projections right now of what would be the. The contribution from the general fund. This is still preliminary, but if you look. For twenty three twenty four year, we have a slight decrease projected. And for the twenty two twenty three year for next year, we have a slight increase about five hundred thousand. There's still quite a bit of discussion as well on the proposals for special ed. And proposals for funding to come more directly to school districts. Versus going through the Sopa, which for us is at the county level. So a lot more to come on this, I would I would predict. But this is what we're projecting at this point in time. Then flipping over to page eight. Number twelve, you see there AMB, we have a couple of our transferred. The transfers to other funds, the first one being for our routine restricted maintenance that supports. Maintenance and operation department and a lot of those capital projects that we bring to you. You see that listed, it's a requirement of the three percent of our general fund expenditures get set aside. And so for twenty two twenty three, we're looking at two point six million there. And then underneath there on bullet B, we have the other the other transfers to other different funds. That you may recall, starting with like Fund Twenty, post employment benefits. We set three hundred thirty seven thousand, Fund Forty, two hundred thousand. For buses, twenty five thousand for equipment, hundred thousand for phones. So those are some of the different assumptions. That we've listed that are are really continuing from year to year, except. Oh, I believe it was last year that we paused some of those. So we have those listed here again as continuing. And that's it on that page. And page nine wraps up what we refer to as the assumptions. If we go on to page ten, this is where we have a number of other items that are really various guidelines. That the board sets by adopting this to help us again direct. Direct our work as we're working on the budget. The one I want to point out and spend a little bit of time on, because I know you probably want to have a little discussion on. Is on page eleven, number fifteen, this came from a board request on our last budget study. That we have some discussion and we look at our multi year projection. Currently, what we do is we we budget the current year, so we would be budgeting twenty two twenty three. And then two more years, twenty three, twenty four, twenty four, twenty five. What we talked about is instead of two years, and you see I've put it in red there to point out the changes. It would be three years into the future. And the third year you discussed possibly being projected with a zero percent COA. Or what I would refer to as flat funding, being applied to revenue. So I put that in there. I just. Put some wording down. We can have some discussion about that at the end and get get your input on that. And then at the bottom of page eleven, we start discussing enrollment and staffing projections. And we've indicated on there that we're working on filling vacancies for resignations, retirements. And then I think the significant things to point out there, continuing on the top of page twelve. For both general education and special education. We've listed that at this time, we there will be no reductions in workforce proposed at this time. So I've listed both of those bullets there. And then right underneath that, I've added the chart. At the page of page twelve with a no reduction than workforce. Is that what you're referring to? Yes. So that's what would be proposed at this time for both general education and special education. In other words, no layoffs. I'll just translate it into that. Okay. And then at the top of page twelve, there continue on. I added the recap that we went over last, at the last budget study session, if you recall. Mister available, Mister Ron made this recommendation that we incorporate this to help us kind of keep a history here of what we've discussed. And so I just took that out and added it right into here to help us. And again, what we talked about when we reviewed this at the last budget study session was that. This is recapping what we did in this current year, the twenty one twenty two year. But as Mr. Frederickson said, we will be starting the process of going through plans. Going to see where we're at with hiring, what positions are still vacant. And what if if some of the needs maybe have shifted. Due to, of course, many of the unexpected things we faced this year. And so just looking at all of that to see what recommendations will be made possibly for any plan revisions. And those would be coming to you to look at. So we're starting that work. And and we'll be bringing that to you at the subsequent budget study sessions. And then the bottom of that page, we have just some fiscal impacts that I think we've discussed several of these already. Page thirteen.
And we have facilities and capital projects. We have, we discussed discuss this quite a bit at length at our facility workshop that we had discussed. And I I updated this to reflect that showing Sylvan and Orchard and that we have. Potential reimbursement that really expected within the next year. So that's an improvement over what we had previously discussed. Well, that's what we discussed at the last facility workshop. So that's there. And then for you stack the five million, so really eleven million of future funds being reimbursed potentially for facilities. And then also listed, of course, as we discussed, implementation of expanded TK and full day kindergarten. And that we're continuing to look at that. We'll bring you a capital projects plan as we usually do. As part of this process in budget development. And then in the next steps, you see listed to some of what I already discussed that we'll be reviewing various plans. We have the EVO plan, the S R three plan, we have the LCAP, lots of plans to bring to you and discuss and for us to review as well. And then at the very bottom of page thirteen and going on to page fourteen. You see the overall budget calendar that lists all the dates where we will continue to review these budget assumptions. Where you provide initial direction. And so that is all listed there. For us to review as well. So. Think I covered everything pretty quick now. And so open it up to some more questions and input. Thank you so much. We'll start with Mister Ron.
I'm just going to list the items because there's several. And if you want to just talk about them later. What would be, why do we still have the hundred thousand dollars set aside for new phones? I know we're paying a mortgage payment on the phone system, but I didn't know we were still had an account that we were setting aside a hundred grand for a new phone. So I want information on that. Second question would be, one information on should we as a board consider beefing up our insurance claim deductible from two hundred to four hundred? Just because of the nature of the claims, it seems to be a more litigious society. And we could have more than one case that requires insurance deductibles. The next thing is. Being that we're looking at possibly going into new schools in the past. We did an annual set aside for a new school startup costs. Where we set aside a couple hundred grand a year in an account for. A new school that's going to come online in a few years that we'd have startup costs associated with that. And then I couldn't find anywhere in the assumptions, maybe we took it out. But we used to have years ago, we used to have the ten percent rule in the assumptions. I don't see the ten percent rule anywhere anymore. Maybe we took it out and I just don't remember. And then the following, the final question will be, I'm not sure what you mean by the three years in the future. Is it next year's budget plus two more? Or is it next year's budget that we're building plus three more? I I don't know what you're.
The requirement is next year plus two years. The discussion would be possibly next year plus three years.
And so in other words, it's technically four years of budgets. It's what you're, right now, we do three years of budgets.
Correct.
And you're a lot talking about do we want to do four years of budgets? Okay, I I just wasn't sure of that. I'm willing to entertain that. I don't have any opinion on that. So those are just going to be my questions associated with today's meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Ron. Miss Mia Call. Miss Lindsay.
Yes, one, yeah, I'm going to do the same thing. Just you can tell me or tell us later. Um, I was under the impression we had our own Sopa that we had go through. So. I'm not understanding that we have to go through the county Sopa to get those funds. I too had a question about ten percent rule that we have. I also was wondering on the, when you said no layoffs. Wanted to know how many of those people are going to be getting tenure? Because they were temporary hires to begin with. And so I want to be, I want to know how many would be getting tenure if we don't look at some adjustment.
Because they were too different. And then I also have a great concern about the purchasing of the property in in Riverdale. I know that we need to have money aside for that. And I need, I need to, I need to know that we have it or how are we going to get it? That that's important next step for this board to know how we're going to pay for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Miss. No questions at this time.
Thank you so much. I the ten percent rule kind of questioning my statement aside, I interested in that. And then I'm I'm not a fan of the four year. I'm happy with the one year plus two. So I think that just adds more work and I'm not sure how much value it has. So that's my way and that is one minute spare. Thank you so much, everybody. Really appreciate your time and we'll see everyone back at seven o'clock. Thank you.